It is four o'clock, so I will call the meeting to order. All three of us are present. Carl's on the phone. We'll stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, liberty, justice for all. All right. So the first item, comments from the public. We have two members of the public here.
Hi Carl.
Hello.
Okay, I'm addressing 115 Boca Raton Pond. I submitted a blight complaint about that in April, but that was a big mistake. Carl had sent Lynette out to investigate the problem. And she came back and said that Greg Chapman told her that EverSource had left the wooden debris all around the pond. I pointed out to her that there was no wires around the pond, so she said, well, is there wires across the street? And I said, yeah, but I don't think EverSource is going to pull all the debris across the road onto the Chapman's property. She didn't even address the fence. So, Larry Bowman said that they clean up after EverSource. And he knew nothing about the EverSource thing, so obviously with no wires going around the pond and stuff, that was a little bit of fib on Chapman's end. So in order to get this mess cleaned up, my daughter just put her property on the market. And people are gonna have to come around that pond to see this property. In order to get this mess cleaned up, we're gonna have to address it as inland wetlands. Carl already has this. I gave this to him about a month ago or so. So as you can see, he was already in 2018 addressed on this problem of the fence and the obstruction of inland wetlands, branches, crap and stuff like that. So anyway, I know that it has to be 100 feet from wetlands, bogs, marshes, whatever you want to call it. You can't have any obstructions there. Now, he's inhibiting the wildlife to go into this pond, number one. Number two, he's not following inland wetlands regulations. His fence is probably five feet from the pond. It's supposed to be 100. He was already told to take it down once and remove the debris. And over the two and a half years, he's been building it up again. So I think this is Chris Cost's department. I don't know, but I want them to follow the regulations.
Badiya, have you have you, I know you went to Lynette. I'm wondering if, well, if you could, if we should, now, I don't want to make you do it, or maybe you want to do it, go to the inland wetlands department, uh, meeting. And I don't know if there's a violation form or for that. It is not a blight. I think I went over that with you. I kind of, I, I sent over, I mean, I reread the whole blight ordinance and it really doesn't qualify as blight, even though I did send him a letter and then he said, hey, look, we'd like you to clean this up. I never heard back from him. Now, you know, I don't know that anyone besides, I don't know if you've seen him do it, Greg? I don't know if you've seen him do anything in terms of building it up.
Yes, my son has. He's even had to take the branches off my daughter's property and bring it onto his.
Yeah, I don't know that anyone else has actually seen it, so I mean.
Carl, it didn't fly there by itself. You know, he, I mean, here's the proof that he's already done it once. And you know, EverSource didn't do it, so you can go.
Did he clean up after, how, how, how do we know he cleaned up after that letter?
Pardon me?
How do we know he even cleaned up after that 2018 letter?
He did clean it up. And now he's starting it all over again a couple of years ago, and he put another fence back up. So this comes from, from this town hall's department, Carl. So as far as I'm concerned, this department should take care of this. The inland wetlands department, land use, whatever. Really, it's, it's really disgusting mess. I know you didn't think it was, but if you really stop and look at it, it's horrible. And the reason I know he's doing it is because if you go around his whole perimeter of his property, he's got stuff built up three feet, four feet high. Even on the perimeter of my daughter's property line. And there's nothing you can do about that because evidently that doesn't fall under blight. Hills of untreated mulch doesn't apply to blight. I don't understand that, but if you say it doesn't, it doesn't. But this inland's wetlands does. Because he's within 100 feet of the pond. So he has to take the fence down, remove the debris, just like he did in 2018. And probably in three years, I'll be back because he'll do it again. But right now, I want it cleaned up for my daughter's sake.
Okay, let me, again, let me talk to Lynette and I mean, she's already seen that letter, but let me, maybe she'll take it to the, maybe she should take it to the inland wetlands commission and let them make a determination as to making her own determination.
Okay, so I have, I have a little bit of problem with her knowing what to do. I mean, she didn't, she, she didn't address the fence at all, knowing that, does she know what the rules say within 100 feet? I mean.
She does, she does.
Well, she came back and said that she didn't see a problem. I don't get it.
Okay, let me, let me talk with her tomorrow. I will, I promise you, I'll talk with her tomorrow.
Promise? Because I asked her with you about a month ago and I never got a response.
Okay.
I was gonna, you know, address this with just you, but.
Well, come, come in this week. Don't come in tomorrow, come in this week. I'll address it with her, okay?
I appreciate it, Carl, very, very much. I really do. I want my daughter's property to sell. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Be nice when I leave. Be nice and don't talk to me.
All right, any other comments? We have online, Mark Calderella has his hand raised. Mark, you can unmute yourself and we're allowing you to talk in one moment.
My name is Mark.
You should be free, Mark.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can.
Um, Mark Calderella, 98, the Hantic Trail. I am a member of the IWWC. Lynette, we did discuss this at our last meeting and it is on the agenda for the upcoming September 15th. We've been asked to, if available, make a visit to the site in preparation for the next meeting, so I just wanted to put that out there so that everyone is aware of that based on the comments I just heard.
All right, that's awesome. Thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
Great, thank you, Mark.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Good, good insight.
Badiya was gone and then get to hear that, but we'll let her, we'll direct her to the recording. Are there the panelists or just us? So I don't think that there's any other public comments. So then, going to the agenda, the next is comments from the selectmen. Scott, wanna go first?
Sure, and I'll be brief, but as we have been reporting about our Raise for Rams Friday Night Lights campaign, it is looking again, very promising that we will be able to open our fall season for each team. Their first home game should be in quotes, "under the lights." So we are not necessarily announcing it publicly, although I just did, but it's, it's not confirmed yet because we, we need to make sure that everything that's necessary in order for our, our Friday Night Lights to occur is in place. And I think we're 95% of the way, so we're looking good. We'll look like we're doing a soft opening to begin the season, so we'll have a few games under the lights. But we will be inviting all of the supporters, all of the donors, all the participants in our fundraising campaign to one of our games relatively early in the season and celebrate what's been accomplished in a, in a, you know, in a, in a, in a period of time, it's, it's a very exciting for opportunity for our community, in my opinion.
Scott, have the lights, have the lights been turned on? Have, have, at all?
I don't have confirmation on that because we had that transformer installed and there was one final piece and I heard there was an electrical box that we had to go out and get, you know, as a final piece. It was a minimal piece, but I think we're, it's, it's in the works.
All right, Carl, you want me to go next?
Yeah, please. I don't have much.
Uh, so following up, this was a factoring budget time, we made the decision to go forward with some new signage at the end of the Elm Street exit off of 95 to replace what's there. And that just, I started that process because Susie Beckman had just left. And so we just got notified yesterday that the signage is ready. Carl, I think you're picking that up and then we'll.
I told, I told Larry to pick it up. I looked, I looked at the size of it. I looked at the size of the sign and I said, I'll have Larry pick that up.
Great. And then, public works all work to install it?
Yes.
Great.
Yeah, thanks for following, thanks for following through on that.
Yeah, not a problem. And then I just, I have a question. I'm gonna be very vague. I got an email from a resident this week that had questions about a town employee and working hours and, you know, if they were doing things on the clock under the town. And I just wanted to follow up on that, but I just want to be vague because I don't know if it's appropriate to throw accusations out there outside of executive session. So maybe that's a conversation we can have at the next meeting.
Yeah, so I've gotten this too, over the years, over 11 years, I've gotten this multiple times. And more recently, I talked to a gentleman and I explained that let, let's just, I don't even, yeah, let's say Sam Smith, who works in the zoning department, takes a half day and he may have comp time to use, so he works 8:30 to 12:30. And then he takes his personal vehicle and he goes over and does some landscaping from, you know, 1:30 to 4:30 and people drive by and it's a Tuesday. And, and that's really the commonest perception on that is, yeah, our workers, there's a few of them, a few, not many, who have other jobs, second jobs. There's no prohibition against it. A few have had longstanding businesses. It's not an everyday occurrence, but it does happen that you might see a town worker working in an afternoon and you see not a town truck, they're a personal truck. And you say, huh, it's Wednesday afternoon at 1 o'clock. Why are they on that property doing what they're doing? And it's because they're using comp time, vacation time, perhaps. They're not using sick time. You can't use sick time like that. So I am happy to investigate, happy to investigate any accusation of fraud. And if there is an accusation of fraud, I'm obligated to investigate it and I will. But that is typically the explanation. Certainly if any worker was found to ever be abusing sick time or town time, appropriate punishment would be handed out. So that's how I'll respond to the general observation with a general comment.
Great, I will, I will forward that email over to you so that you can use it to follow.
And I, and by the way, if there is a specific employee, which I'm sure there is, I can go back and look at records and I could say, yeah, that employee was taking comp time on that day at that time. And it'll clear it right up. So that's perfect.
Yep, so that's what I'll do because they, they specify the date, you know?
Perfect.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll, I'll, thank you. All right, that's all I have, Carl.
So we ended the fiscal year, we're pretty much in the books with our end of fiscal year, end of '22 fiscal year. In general numbers, the town had on the expenditure side, on the board of ed side, they had about a $250,000, I'm using approximate numbers, surplus on the expenditure side. On the town side, on the expenditure side, about 250,000 under expended on the budget. On the town side, we had about a million dollars in surplus revenue. And therefore the town had an overall surplus of about, I think it's 1.5 to 1.6 million dollars. We're gonna be able to do a few things with that. Obviously, primary, primary is to keep our rainy day fund at 17%. And we address some of these items later in the budget. Unfortunately, because of what I'm doing today, I just didn't look back and prepare any further comments. So that's probably most important at this moment.
Great. All right. So then moving on, the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the Board of Selectmen meeting from July 26, 2022. We have a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll take it. I'll make it.
Yep, I'll second that.
All right, any discussion, corrections? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? I'm staying, great. All right, so business before the board. So Carl, these are the motions that you were just referencing in terms of what we're gonna be doing with the town surplus. So I'll, I'll go through these one at a time because that's probably the easiest way since you don't have the agenda in front of you.
Yeah, can, can I make a, a general comment?
Sure.
Before we get into this. So I did not, you do not see a call of a town meeting on this yet. And the reason for that is there's one other item and I meant to, I sent it to the Board of Finance. I did not, I should have, did I send it? I don't know if I sent it to the other members of the Board of Selectmen. Up on Whisper Cove, which is off River Road, I don't know how, if any of you know Whisper Cove, beautiful houses. Off River Road there, good views of the river. When that was developed or subdivided, the town asked for some open space to be allocated. And so between numbers seven and number nine, Whisper Cove, there is a walkway. I'm not sure where you can park to use the walkway, but there is a walkway where you can go down a path. And then there's an area down below where there are benches and you can look at the water. It's very beautiful. The split rail fence that was installed back 15 years ago or something is falling apart and we've made some repairs here and there, but the fence is in horrible disrepair at this point. The homeowners next to it call me and say it's broken again and this section's breaking and this section's leaning. So Dan Moran and I got three quotes on fixing the fence. It's about 900 feet of split rail fence. And the quotes came in at 14, 15, and 18,000. So I've sent a memo over to the Board of Finance for action at their next meeting to appropriate 15,000, just in case the low bidder either underbid the matter or there's a contingency that's needed. Or if the low bidder is unable to finish the job, asking for 15,000 from the capital non-recurring fund to be appropriated towards just installing a new fence that will solve this issue for a generation the next 15, 20 years. And I figured instead of calling a town meeting and then having this approved, calling another town meeting, we'd have the Board of Finance appropriate. We'd do a call for the items today plus that item for a call of a town meeting. And do it all at once instead of having two town meetings. There's no reason we shouldn't be able to have a town meeting in early October. Maybe even late September, depending. And so that's why on today's agenda, it's just discussion and action to approve, but no call of the town meeting.
Great. All right. Thank you for that update, Carl. I'm just going back, sorry, to the agenda here to get. All right, so the first item is, no, sorry, I just opened.
By the way, I love, I love having a driver. It's a good thing. It's good having a 17-year-old.
Matt, letter A, discussion and possible action to appropriate the 125,000 from the town's surplus. Do you have that there?
Yep.
Okay.
Surface for 2022 and transfer set funds to an off-budget fund called Main Street Paving for the purpose of repaving parking areas on Main Street.
So I'll make that.
So I'll, I'll second it. And just briefly, I'll, I'll jump in and you guys know this, there are in front of Essex Mall, in front of, I think Essence, and also in front of what's the running store? Jeez. Over, where you're crying, yes, um, there are just areas that need to be repaved. And it's not doing every area, it's doing just areas where there are big holes where cars pull into and they're tire sinks. It may not, 127 may or may not wanted to dedicate these funds specifically to that and have them put into the general paving budget because that can get followed by many others, rightfully so. Paving budget can be as big as we want it to be, but this would be typically to address some of the worst areas on Main Street. So that was the idea behind this.
Great. I think the only, the only thoughts that I had with this one, Carl, and I think that this came up at the Board of Finance meeting was we, I know that at the ARPA level, we've discussed potential sidewalk crosswalk improvements on Main Street.
Yep.
And coordinating that work so that we could get some efficiency there in terms of whatever
Yeah.
and construction work that needs to be done.
Yep, so what can be done is, so first of all, this is for next year. This is 2023. It's not, certainly not for the fall. What can be done is Jeff Jacobson is obviously designing the crosswalks. What he can do is design the crosswalk such that any paving that is done is paved so that, you know, they're repaired, so they do not interfere with any potential future crosswalk job. The only things that, so we're working out a couple of things of the crosswalks and I, I forget what I brought up with the Board of Finance. We are going to ask for an additional fifth crosswalk across from the Kate. Did I bring that up? Do you remember?
Yeah, you, we saw it in writing today. Somewhere with those five, I, I looked at the five bump outs.
Okay, all right. But yeah, so we're, we are going to ask for DOT to approve a fifth crosswalk. If we do that, the crosswalk that is currently at Sheffield Street will move north to the other side of Sheffield Street. So it'll be more in front of Cartier Optical than it will be in front of the art, the art store, the art shop or Old Colony Liquor. So it'll move that way. Jeff Jacobson and Chief Spira, when we were trying to look at a way to get a fifth crosswalk, we determined that this is what made the most sense. So anyway, that is somewhat related to what we were just talking about, somewhat not, but I, I will certainly impart that information to Jeff that in designing the crosswalks, that if we are fixing any of the parking areas, we will not make, construct them so that they would have to be reconstructed for the crosswalks.
Okay. I have another kind of semi-related, but not.
Yep.
As if we're repaving, we're gonna have to re-strike parking spaces. Is it possible to, when we're talking to DOT, look at what the feasibility is of changing where bike, bike riders and runners might be able to go down Main Street so that they're not right behind cars as they're pulling out? Probably is dangerous to the riders and runners and frustrating to people trying to pull out of parking spots. And I don't know if this is a time to take more of a comprehensive look at how to deal with that, at least maybe on one side of the street.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a perplexing issue that we have on Main Street. As you can imagine, it's been looked at for 20 years, or longer even. You know, did, did you have any specific thoughts on how that might be done?
I mean, I was, I was wondering if we could put, you know, a bike lane that was between the parking spots and the sidewalk and change the angle of the parking spaces so that we're not coming in and eliminating the, you know, a lane of traffic by bumping things out an extra four feet, but we can change the angle of the parking spaces, but that's where, you know, we get above my pay grade.
Yeah, I think that's a total redesign of Main Street, basically. Yes, I mean, you're talking about changing the angles of all the parking spots on Main. Is that right?
I mean, or.
Be changing.
I mean, or on one side of the street, you know, so that there's a side that bikes can get by safely, you know, I don't.
Yeah.
I don't know if this is something that we could talk to DOT and, you know, if we're, if we're broaching them to talk about crosswalks, if we could talk to them about, you know, looking at the feasibility of doing.
The other, the other interesting thing is if we were to do that, really these bump outs don't work if you're gonna have a lane between the sidewalk and where cars park. That doesn't work either. Because you're bringing, right? Because you're raising the crosswalk out. So cyclists won't be able to do that. They'll have to, they'll run into a curb essentially. Do, do you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I follow, yeah.
Because if you look, so I, I know two mains, I'm sure there's more in Connecticut, but I bet there's not many more that are similar to Old Sable. One of them is Middletown. And I know Middletown exactly, it's exactly the same in terms of how they. I know Milton exactly, it's exactly the same in terms of how they thought and what we're proposing to. Being little, uh, I don't give her. No alternative design either. I could ask Jeff. I could ask him if he can conceive of any other alternate design. Uh. I don't know how you do it without eliminating a lane of traffic. I, I just don't know how you do it. Um, but I'm not a civil engineer, so I can ask.
Okay.
Matt, do you wanna send me an email on that?
Yeah, sure thing.
Just send me an e- email and say, hey, just inquiring if there's any place to put a bike runner or runner pack or something.
Will do.
And I'll, um, just have a general conversation with them. See if he has seen anything. That he likes.
Okay. Well done. That's all I have.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. So the next one, item B, discussion and possible action to appropriate a hundred thousand from the town's surplus for fiscal year. Twenty twenty-two for the town's share of grant related expenses for fiscal year twenty-three. And transfer the funds to a newly created off budget account called Grant Related Projects. Uh, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay.
Um. Matt was at the meeting at the board of finance meeting last week, so he's gonna have to listen to me and say all this twice, but. Uh, basically, we've gotten so much money in grants lately that there's no way I can. Uh, come on, seriously. Um, no way I can actually, uh, get the work done and not exceed my engineering budget now. Uh, is it out of the question that we would use some of these funds to. Get a shovel ready project done? So, you know, if it's twenty thousand dollars to do some sort of. Shovel ready project that comes to mind, and we do have one in mind, would we use these funds? We might to get future grant funds. Uh, but with the grant, grant money that we've already received, I am going to need. Additional money to, or the town is, well, I should say, the town is going to need additional funds. To implement these projects, uh, and there just simply isn't enough than an eighty thousand dollar a year engineering budget. So. Uh, that was the purpose behind this. Um, it will mostly go to engineering. It may not all go to engineering. Um, it could go to. Uh, other services that are needed, uh. If there's environmental services or, uh, other materials that are needed. Um, I don't know, but I'll certainly keep everybody apprised as to. Um, how these funds are used and certainly those, how, how they are used would be transparent because, uh. They go through our accounting and finance. So that's the idea behind the hundred thousand.
Great. Carl, question if.
Yep.
If we're gonna spend fifty thousand out of that fund, is that gonna go through the normal process then of coming to us for discussion to the board of finance? Or we would just, we have the funds so we can.
If it goes to, if this goes to town meeting, I would, uh, say that it, the funds are ready to be used.
Okay.
Uh, that's the idea. Uh, as long, I mean, I can probably at this point say that they're going to be used. For the Route One connectivity grant, the, and the Route One sidewalk project. From there. Uh, that's how these funds are primarily going to be used. However, we do want to look at extending the sidewalk from the Henny Penny. Down past the Staples. And to do that, uh, that's gonna take some engineering. In fact, Jeff, Jeff Jacobson has already sent us a few designs. That he's done in Woodbury, Connecticut. Uh, to, uh, basically where you have sidewalk extended over kind of a, um, an inlet. Well, that's a title wetman there. Uh, so we might use those funds to, uh, have a. Shovel ready project such as that, but, um. I foresee these funds primarily being used towards engineering on these, uh, projects that we've already received from preschool.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye. I, I mean, in some, in some ways, some ways we're a victim of our own success here. We've been just wildly successful with grant fund. Uh, these are actually earmarks in the state budget that seven hundred and seventy thousand. That we received is actually called an earmark, as was the five hundred thousand that we received for the park. Uh, behind the pickleball courts and the police station. And just so you guys know. Uh, we're trying to spend this money and I've been in touch with people from the state. And basically the response I got from one of the state workers who. Is my contact on the five hundred thousand that we received, the earmark. For the, to kind of redevelop the area behind the pickleball courts and the police station is. We're trying to figure out. Who is going to oversee this project because it is not. Allocated in our normal daily work routine. And I'm like, okay, that means we're. You guys have earmarked money that you don't have the personnel to administrate. So. That's a little bit of the dilemma that's going on right now that I'm finding, and I guarantee you other towns are. I had this conversation with the state worker last week. He goes, we'll let you know. I'm not, we're not sure who's gonna be able to oversee this project. I'm like, okay, I don't know how to respond to that.
Yeah. Yeah, well aware of what's going on with.
Yeah, I'm not, that's not criticizing. Yeah, I mean, the state is, you know, the state is lost some employees and. It lost a lot of institutional knowledge, uh, up there. So there's probably people who are learning the job right now too.
All right, uh, next item is. Item C, discussion and possible action to appropriate the two hundred and fifty thousand from the town's surplus for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. And transfer said funds to an off budget fund called Sidewalk Construction.
I'll make the motion.
Scott motion. I'll second it.
Uh, we've done this, uh, for every year for. Uh. Few years in terms of, uh. Um, for sidewalks. And we do, we are going to have a match both on the earmark for the seven hundred and seventy thousand. And if we receive the steep grant. Uh. Raining like crazy right now where we are. So I don't know if there, if there's excess noise, let me know.
Not at all. Guys canceling this on three.
They're amazing, aren't they? So, uh, we do have Matt, we do have a match in the steep grant. If we get it. Uh, we did apply for it to complete that sidewalk project. We do have a match on the earmark. That we received from the state on the seven seventy. It'll probably be about the two fifty. Uh, for the match, so, uh, we had an empty fund to complete that yet.
All right. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, opposed, passes unanimously. Um, next item D, discussion and possible action to appropriate fifty thousand. From the town's surplus for fiscal year twenty-two and transfer said funds to an off budget fund called Vegetation Management. For the purpose of combating invasive plants in Old Sable. Motion?
I'll make that motion.
Uh, I'll second it.
Matt, you wanna, I'm, I'm writing something down. You were at the discussion. You wanna talk about that?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll talk about this. So what, what this is for is not, you know, so. Invasive species, Kathy Conley was in and spoke, spoke with the Board of Finance, uh, last week. Invasive species are, you know, defined through agricultural, you know, regulations. It's not just unwanted plants. Um, and, you know, they choke out native plants and they continue to spread, you know, town properties. Um, they're all over. Uh, the presentation at the Board of Finance meeting is very thorough. Um, but basically this is funds that could be used for specific projects. Um. To specifically battle invasive species. So that might mean doing education. Educational programming for town residents so that they're aware of how they could tackle invasive species on the property. Or it might mean actually doing the work, whether Public Works is gonna be doing intensive mowing and tarping and treatment. On town property to get rid of, you know, invasive species. And there was a lot of discussion about the Colter Street Founder's Park. And I think, you know, it was roughly almost, almost fifty percent of that property is covered by invasive species. It takes a lot of time to manage. Um, so what my understanding was through this was that. In the future, if we're going to be using this funding, Carl will come back to Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance to talk about. How the funds are gonna be used in a proposed project for them, since right now we don't have any specific proposed projects. Anything I missed, Carl?
No, we don't. We don't have any specific project. In fact, we'll probably need, need some help in implementing these funds from a consultant. Uh. Hopefully, you know, nobody we're paying a lot of money to. Um, again, we would, I, it was more. I, and this, I don't want this to sound the wrong way, but it's more, um. To keep the Board of Finance informed than it is to ask for permission because again. As long as the funds are used to combat invasive species and educate the public. Once it goes to town meeting and is approved, they can be expanded. So I just wanna be clear about, about that.
Okay. Great. No questions. Scott? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Passes unanimously. Uh, item E.
Okay, Matt, I'm sorry. I wanna make one more comment on that.
Yeah.
Uh, and I said it at the Board of Finance and I'll say it at the Board Select meeting. Uh, you know, Kathy Connolly has been in my ear for eleven years and. I have a Kathy Connolly file on my lap, on my computer, my, uh, my, uh, PC. And. Uh, she has come up with more ideas than I can possibly begin to tell you right now. She's, uh, an asset to the town. She is so passionate about what she does in. Public spaces and I am doing the right thing. Um, and, uh, I, I wanted to put forward, um. Put forward a, a, a sum of money to show that the town appreciates her efforts and the town, um, takes with. Appreciate what she does and, uh, listens to her and recognizes what a serious problem she is. She really, really has done a lot for the town and given the town a lot of advice. And, uh, this will be exciting to take out a project and see the results. So, uh, thanks. That's it.
Thanks. All right, so the next item is discussion and possible action to appropriate a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars. From the town's surplus for fiscal year twenty-two for the purpose of providing capital to update various town parks and beaches. And to transfer said funds to the Park and Rec Sinking Fund. We have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Yeah, uh. I think we are all in agreement, part of it, on the fact that we need to invest in parks and rec. Uh, we have an amazing array of recreational activities in our town. They've been, a lot of them are very aged, uh, certainly the bathrooms at Old Town Beaches. And anything we can do to make our parks better, and I think this potentially is a modest investment. We can make to just have people be able to use our facilities and say, oh, that was not a disgusting experience. And I, I'm being a little bit probably dramatic on that, but, um. You know, making our splash pad at Kavanaugh Park a better place, a safer place, making our bathrooms. Um, more modern, uh, with the amount of money we're allowed to invest at, at those places. Uh, so, and, and there were a few other projects in there which I'm forgetting right now, but. Uh, Parks and Rec is so vital for our community, brings in so much money for our community. The revenue, uh, is an important part of our revenue projections every year. That I think this is an incredibly modest investment that we can make, um. On behalf of the community, on behalf of our visitors, and certainly on behalf of the Ballpark and Recreation. So, thanks.
Great, and I, I sec, I second everything you say in there, Carl. When Ray made the presentation at the ARPA committee a couple of weeks ago, I thought that this would be a great use for. Uh, some of the town surplus funds and just for the, the benefit of anybody that's watching this at a later point. Um, the, the projects that are named under here are public wifi access for parks and beaches. And that'll also help with, um, making sure that we have the ability to accept credit cards down at the parks and beaches. Um, in terms of the town side accepting payments, uh, technology upgrades to Vicky Duffy Pavilion. Resurfacing of the splash pad, as you mentioned, over a trash park, upgrades to the Harveys Beach Bath House. Upgrades to the town beach bathrooms and fencing upgrade at Mini Golf.
That's great, thanks.
And so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, none. All right, next item is F. Discussion and possible action to appropriate two hundred thousand from the town's surplus for fiscal year twenty-two. For a Department of Public Works sweeper and transfer the funds to the DPW Equipment Capital Fund, three, three, five, three. Uh, motion?
I'll make it.
Carl and I'll second it.
Okay. Um, the sweeper, uh, I think the sweeper we have purchased used and we've had it for many, many years. Uh, Larry thinks he can get thirty to fifty thousand on the, uh, we've turned this in now, so. Uh, the new sweeper is approximately three hundred and sixty thousand. Uh, allocating two hundred thousand of it, we leave about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty to pay for the remainder. Uh, the Public Works Fund is running a surplus right now. Uh, we do have payments through May of two thousand twenty-four. Um, but, uh, we, the, this is a very, uh. It's a, it's a cool machine. It sweeps and it, it also will make our test face including far more efficient. And less labor intensive. Uh, we, you know, our storm drains are, are test based and get bonded up. Pretty quickly sometimes. So, uh. Uh, hopefully this machine will really help Public Works do their job a little bit better. It was a need identified by Larry several years ago. Uh, it was brought to the, uh, Board of Finance Liaison for Public Works. Um, Rick Swan, I think Tom Stevenson and me. Uh, thought it was a good project to play forward. I support it. Um, and, uh, hopefully we can get this machine later this fall. If it's approved at town meeting.
So you said they, they should be able to get it later this fall. It's a pretty quick turnaround.
Yeah, I think, I, I think it is a pretty quick turnaround purchase. Yeah, I don't think there's any, um. Crazy backup on, on the machine. Larry seems to think you'd be able to get it.
Okay, great. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, passes unanimously. Uh, next item G, discussion and possible action to appropriate. Two hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars from the town's surplus for fiscal year twenty-two to the Board of Education. And transfer the funds to a newly created account entitled Air Quality HVAC Improvements. Motion?
I'll make that motion.
So move, uh, Scott did, I'll second it, yeah. Uh, basically the Board of Ed, uh, would like to get air conditioning into their schools, uh, and they're starting at the grammar school. I think they're, what, Matt, what did they say? Going to the middle school after?
I think so.
Uh, but they wanna finish the grammar school first. Um, I don't know if it was, boy, it was, did it rain down there today? I'm sorry to change the subject. Did it rain at all?
On parts of town, not my house.
Yeah, okay. I mean, boy, did it, we just went through the craziest blinding rain. Um, so. Uh, basically to get air conditioning into the grammar school and so that they can move on, they will also be applying for state funds. Uh, whether it's for the Goodwin School project or for the next project that they have in mind for air conditioning. Uh, the Goodwin School is, uh. Whether it's for the Goodwin School project or for the next project that they have in mind for air conditioning. Uh, the Goodwin School is uh mostly going to be able to get done, which is good, uh, primarily because of the use of Esser Funds, E S S E R, which uh, was primarily part of the American Rescue Plan Act, uh, and that was about 900,000. The Goodwin School project is, according to the schools, by far the most expensive project to retrofit the air conditioning because the power apparently was inadequate. So all new power had to be uh, run from the road, uh, which has already been done. And I know public works performed some in-kind services for that. So uh, so this is just to improve air quality, air and um, humidity control, uh, make the schools more comfortable as uh summers uh, seem to be coming a little bit earlier and lasting a little later.
Great. Uh, any discussion? All right, all those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, none. All right. Um, the next one is discussion and possible action to appropriate 366,824 dollars from the town surplus for fiscal year 22 to the capital non-recurring fund for 3350, or sorry, 33, fund number 3350. Uh, motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right.
And I'll second, I'll second it. And basically what we're doing here is uh not letting these funds drop to the bottom line. We don't need to improve our reserves beyond 17%. Uh, in addition to everything we've talked about today, 185,000 dollars is going into our rainy day fund, uh, because after we expend all these funds, 185,000 dollars will be left. And when that drops to the bottom line, it'll keep our rainy day funded 17%. So by allocating to the capital non-recurring fund, we're not letting it drop to the rainy day fund, we're putting it into a capital account uh, from which when the town identifies future capital projects, which we most certainly will, whether it be crosswalks on Main Street, whether it be uh, who knows, it could be air conditioning at the middle school. Um, these funds can be used. Uh, so that, that's the purpose of having these funds go into this account in addition to the budgeted amount that we put in every year, which is about 300,000. And it's a very active account. We identified fund, we identified projects all year long and there's always more projects that are identified. You know, people are clamoring in town now for more pickleball routes. Uh, so I don't know that we're going to build them, but there's the ask. Uh, Park and Rec certainly has more projects that they would like to get done. They want to pave the Harveys Beach parking lot. Um, we didn't put that forward. So um, there are more projects, there always are. So uh, that's the purpose of putting these funds into this account. Uh, Matt, as you previously uh, asked, uh, any spend from the capital non-recurring account must go through board of finance, board selectman, town meeting, whether it's $1, whether it's 250,000.
Um, previously at the last couple of months, we've had conversation about the potential of looking at a gun buyback program. And I thought that that might be a way that we could look to utilize some of the um surplus funds here. Uh, I had followed up, it was delegated to me and I sent numbers over from the chief that he had done some research. And so I, I think that this is one of those, we don't know how many, how many people are going to come forward um, and have a set pricing, but I, you know, I, based on his numbers, you know, I'd like to propose that we put 7,500 dollars up to 7,500 dollars that would go towards a gun buyback program.
Okay, so I, there was an email I saw that what, the chief proposed, I think, something like a community safety fund. What was it, Matt?
Yeah, the, the chief proposed a, a community safety fund, um, you know, and 10,000, you know, 10,000 dollars. Um, you know, I'm not sure, I, I'm not necessarily comfortable with proposing something that is non-specified. Uh, I think that it makes sense to, you know, to do the gun buyback program and anything that we don't use in that fund then could be returned to capital non-recurring.
Yeah, I, I I don't think a community safety fund, I don't think it would be supported. Never mind. I, you know, ne- never mind the non-specificity of it. I just don't think it'll even be supported uh beyond the board of selectmen or even at the board of selectmen. Uh, just because it, it's too vague. So I think a buyback program uh, might be, I have no issue with it. Um, it just seems like is, is 7,500, I mean, based on the numbers I saw from other communities, is that a very high number for our community or not? And what did you think? I'm happy to support a number, by the way. Okay, I'll support.
Your what?
I will support a number.
Well, I mean, um, yeah, it's, it's hard to tell and I, you know, I'm not an expert in there. I mean, I saw that, you know, Guilford, which is not too far from us, you know, had, you know, a higher, higher rate than I would have expected. Um, you know, so maybe this is, this is a place where we say up, can we say up to, say, 20,000 dollars for this and then anything that is not used by this, you know, program then gets returned?
How about, how about up to 75? I don't want to do 20. I was going to say 5,000, but
5,000?
Well, I, I just don't know. Based on some of the examples I saw, I didn't see it was a big number, but was Guilford a bigger number? Did?
Guilford, Guilford was higher.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, let's do 7,500 then. How about that? We'll do 7,500. We'll recommend it to the board of selectmen, okay? Specifically, specifically for that purpose and none other.
Okay.
So um, so Matt, deduct 7,500 from, so wait, let's let's approve a new, let's amend the capital non-recurring and deduct 7,500 from it.
All right. Of course, 7,500 is really fun to deduct off the top of your head in public. Um, so I'm just going to do use that calculator to them really quick. Two, four, five. Five, six, zero, minus seven, five. Two, four, five, five, six, zero, minus seven, five, zero, zero. All right, so the new number would be 238,060 dollars to the capital non-recurring. Nope. That's the wrong one. 366, eight, two, four. Sorry, I took the HVAC line. So the, the new number would be 359,324 dollars to capital non-recurring.
All right, so. 359, three, twenty-four?
359, three, two, four.
Okay. Okay.
So um, I'll, I'll make the motion, discussion and um.
You'll make that amendment. So we're amending the motion to the capital non-recurring, right?
Yes.
Okay, Scott made the motion, I'll second it.
All right, so I'll, I'll make a motion that we amend uh, item H, which is discussion and possible action to appropriate and, and we had 366, eight, twenty-four. We're going to make it 359, three, twenty-four. So that's less 7,500 to the town surplus um, for the fiscal year 2022 to the capital non-recurring fund 3350.
Okay, I'll second you.
Good.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And now do we amend the agenda and?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
So
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda for an item to appropriate 7,500 from fiscal year 22 surplus and to uh, transfer the funds to a newly created account entitled gun buyback program.
I second that.
Any discussion?
Uh, no. Um, I know the chief is uh, in favor of it. We'll see how it goes. We'll see what happens.
All right. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, passes. Next item is I, release of the encroachment permit bond as recommended by the director of public works for 14 Whitney Avenue.
I'll move it.
All right. Second. Uh, any discussion? We have the, the documents. So uh, I don't think that there's anything that we really need to discuss with it. Um, all those in favor, say by aye.
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 All right. Next item is now we're into our appointments, I think. Uh, appointments for the architectural review board term expiration, reappointment regular member Donald Lee. It's a three year term due to expire September 25. Make the motion.
Make that motion.
Motion.
Scott makes the motion that for J1.
J1, Scott, I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, J2, architectural review board term expiration, reappointment alternate member Tina Rupp. It's a three-year term due to expire September 25.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Scott, I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, board of education, uh, vacancy due to resignation.
I'll make a motion that uh, is, I don't know if Leanne Flynn.
She is here in the audience.
Okay, a, a person?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to make the motion that we appoint uh, Leanne Flynn to fill a vacancy with Tara Barrows. It's like, things take effect September 1. I'm going to make that motion.
Second then.
Uh, and I'd like to introduce Leanne to see if she would want to say a few words, tell us a little bit about her background.
Hi, Carl.
Hi, Leanne.
How are you?
Sorry I'm not there. Sorry I'm not.
Oh, no problem, no problem. Um, I really am so excited to be able to work with um, the uh Board of Ed. Uh, as you know, I recently retired from uh, 35 years of teaching in Rocky Hill as of uh, June 16th. So this has been a wonderful way for me to keep my hands in education and uh, be an active and contributing member to uh, the town of Old Saver. In fact, I am going to be starting um, my duties going to convocation. I uh, spoke with Jan and I've been working closely, making a smooth transition with Tara Barrows, uh, who is wonderful. Talk about big shoes to fill. So uh, I am uh, excited to begin and uh, I can't wait to work alongside all of you.
Great.
Thank you.
And I'll just add a word of thanks to Tara for all of her work as the chair of the board of Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, uh, J4, ethics commission, uh, term expiration. I'll just do both of these together, four and five. Uh, reappointment of member Paula Lad and reappointment of member Edward Casella. These are four-year terms due to expire September 2026. Uh, motion?
I'll make that motion.
Scott?
I, I lost, I, I was out of the meeting for about 30 seconds. Where are we right now?
Uh, I just appointed both uh, or motioned both ethics commission members at the same time, uh, Paula Lad and Edward Casella.
So the vote was taken on Leanne Flynn?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I, I want to make sure I get recorded on that. I, because I was definitely lost to me. Leanne's going to be, uh, she can be terrific. So uh, great candidate. We're lucky to find candidates like that for our board of Ed who are uh, ready to serve and willing to work. So this is a busy board. So thank you, Leanne. Uh, and go ahead, you're on the next one. Go ahead.
Yeah, so we, we, we have made them, Scott, did you make that motion? For the other?
For the, yeah, the final one, yes.
Yeah, so we've motioned it and seconded it for the two ethics appointments.
All right, great.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All right, and so now we have reached the ARPA ad hoc committee agenda items of our halls, let everybody in.